So, let's see. I don't know. We don't... So Dorothy's here. Craig Conrad is out of town, as is Chris Hamilton.
Jack Hatter is in his child's concert.
Yes. They'll be a little late.
Who is taking notes today?
Jay. Jay. Okay. So let's get started. So we're doing what the committee's supposed to be doing, which is gathering information. And we're just basically, I think, we're going to be sharing the information we're gathering. None of this is complete, or at least I should say, from the point of view of the experts, who I've been more closely working with. Dorothy's been working with the users and helping them develop their questionnaire, et cetera. So I just wanted to say again, thank you, everybody. As I said in my email, there's a lot of interest in the work that we're doing. People are going to get more interested as time goes by, I'm sure. And one of the things I'm hearing is just appreciation that we're working together as well as we are. And, you know, people want that, basically, in spite of our former -- some of our former So the agenda, you've seen the agenda. I don't know if there's anything missing. We can just maybe at the end see if there's anything after the assignment, just any other issues that we want to think about, if there's anything else to discuss. Is there anything, like some egregious thing missed in terms of reviewing the agenda? Does anybody have anything to say on that? Jay, I got something from you, and I couldn't see anything. I wasn't quite sure what it was. Maybe it was just a notification. I wasn't quite sure what it was.
Yeah, I think it was a notification. I was doing spaces.
Okay. Okay. I wasn't sure if there was something. I looked, and I couldn't find anything else. Okay. So just to say, in terms of what has happened in the last month, Dorothy's worked with the faculty and staff to put together a questionnaire, staff that looks like has participated, I don't know, pretty fully, is that true, Megan? In terms of answering the questionnaires. And so that's going to be information that's very important. It's not enough to kind of look at the systems, you've got to know how they're functioning and why, you know, so the users have close-at-hand information about that. The experts, we've spent some time in the high school looking at systems. Again, we didn't talk to any of the users over there today. We spent time here, basically on this hall. And we, three of the teachers were there, which was really great. We talked to Ms. Sims, Ms. Dedman, and Ms. Maybra. So it was really... And, oh, and...
Ms. Hoover.
Who?
Ms. Hoover.
Ms. Hoover, yes. Yeah. So they were able to tell us, you know, they were still doing after-school work. They really talked to us about, you know, some of the challenges within their rooms. And that was really great to have those conversations. So let's start. So Dorothy has put together a PowerPoint in terms of information gathered from the survey. And I don't know what her...
Okay. So I actually have two PowerPoints, and they are 60 slides. It would take us a long time to go through them, and I think that everybody would burn out on that. So even though I'm putting it here, it's because I'm going to use it in a few minutes. What I wanted to start with first is that I've written about 15 minutes' worth of my takes from the survey answers, and then we can do questions, if the builder is up or either user's. And I can try to point out to where I have relevant information on the slides. I also want to point out that Hinata and Brian were persons of contacts in their buildings for staff members that I wanted to give anonymous answers, or to provide more comments in a non-identifiable way. So at some point, I'll make sure that you have time to go through this. So like Judith pointed out, we got a great completion rate of the survey. I didn't put it together, but I believe Dr. Holden, that he said that it was near everyone filled it up.
It was, yes.
Near everyone filled it up, okay. And so I wanted to thank the users, I mean, especially those that are here, but also the ones that might be watching this for taking the time to provide us with that wealth of information on the state of their classroom and their building and on the grounds. I want to apologize in advance because I'm not going to be able to go and cover and acknowledge all of the comments that were given. There was just so much. So I'm just giving an overview here, but I want the users to know that I've read all of them and that they're being shared with the whole group.
A lot of really good information.
A lot of good information.
Great.
And so this committee has access to the raw data of this, which includes the name of teachers. And so I'm asking you for now that until I have time to go in and take the names of teachers and just leave the room numbers, that we do not share this until I have time to take it out. Because it wasn't clear to the users that they were going to be tied to their name. I don't want to put them in an awkward situation here. The other disclaimer I'm going to give is that I'm going to make reference to the dilapidated and sometimes unclean state of the buildings in the comments. And it was clear from the data that the users, even though they mentioned this, they never put it, they never phrased it as a lack of maintenance or a lack of custodial work. If anything, they were pointing out that those items were reaching their life cycles and they were just too hard to maintain, or too hard to repaint, to, to, too hard to maintain and to repair. So this is really not a reflection, at least from what I've gathered from the nuances of the answers, on the lack of maintenance or custodial work. It's more like those items are worn out. Okay. So I will start with the strength that I've seen in the answers. What are the strengths of our buildings? Well, the first one was really the views and access to daylight. This seems to be pretty clear from the users that they appreciated having green space around, they appreciated having enough daylight. And there is one exception to this. It's in this building, it's room nine, because they're hidden from the daylight by the trailer. And they don't have access to it. The strength also, so the green spaces. And that comes with a caveat that I'm going to cover later in. It's great that there is green space and trees, but there is a downside to the proximity and the use by the community of those green spaces, and I'm going to comment that, too. The background noise seems manageable at Mills Lawn, except for classrooms near the trailer. I'm sorry, Brian. And also, the parking lots seems to be deemed to be sufficient in capacity, in proximity, and in condition. So those were the main strengths that I got from the users. I'm going to switch now to one area of issue that I just am summarizing under health issues. The first one is so many users reported leaky ceilings, mold and mildew in both buildings. They reported mold and mildew smells coming from permanent fixtures in the classrooms, such as cabinets and any other things like that, and especially from the 1952 wing in this building. The other health issue that was reported is stagnant air. And even if we set COVID aside, and I think that COVID has really put the finger on the need for ventilation, even if we set the COVID aside, we need to also reckon with the fact that stagnant air is a contributing factor to childhood asthma, and childhood asthma is the leading cause of chronic absenteeism in schools nowadays. And even if we decide to set aside COVID and asthma, we know by studies that the buildup of CO2 leads to lower academic performance. So we have here so many reasons to consider increasing air a change as a priority for our buildings. I see that everybody is taking notes. I appreciate that. Another health issue that was reported is pests. And when we're talking about pests, we're talking about termites in both buildings. Ants, bats, mice, rats, snakes, wasps. And mostly because of the lack of screens on the windows. So if teachers are trying to ventilate the rooms, then they let in pests. But mice and snakes, I don't even, don't want to think about it. There are also spiders, and as an arachnophobic person, I'm not going to talk about it. Thank you very much. Okay. So those, this is what I summarized under health issue. The other component or category of comments that I've seen was about safety and security. Overall, users did not feel safe in the event of an active shooter. There were several reasons that they listed here. It's how the entrances open to hallways and how there is no vestibules. That was one reason, both at Mills Lawn and the high school and middle school. There was an exception, is that the teachers that say that they felt safe were the one in the shoebox to the high school, because they're in the back, and there was no direct access to it. Users were asking about a closed front door vestibule in both buildings. And even if we set aside the possibility of active shooters, the vestibules were still mentioned as needed to handle other situations, such as students attempting to leave the premises undetected, and also custody disputes and other scenarios like this, where we need to have administrators and a front person that are being able to see who comes in and out. The person in Mills Lawn that is taking care of opening the front door with a camera, I mentioned that she couldn't see what people had in their hands. And so she has, by her camera view, she can only see maybe the face, and she doesn't see what they carry and what they have in hands, which we can probably improve on that, and we should. Teachers and users mentioned the need for cameras around entrances and in the hallways. The other comment for safety and security is the fact that so many doors inside do not lock from the inside and open outwards. And so if there is an intruder in the building, there is very limited resources for them to block entrance into their classroom.
The doors open outward generate an safety issue.
Yeah, for fire.
Because they're, yeah, for fire.
For fire.
They're supposed to open them.
And so, but then the question is intruders, right? They wouldn't be able to block the door. At least, that's what they said. Another safety and security issue that was reported was the fact that they couldn't hear emergency announcements. So first, there are some rooms that don't have the emergency announcement speakers, such as the staff lounge and other areas. But also, for most of the other users, is the fact that the HVAC is so loud that they cannot hear the announcements. Some people say that they could not, they have to leave their classrooms to have fun conversations because the HVAC is so loud. So this is the kind of ambient noise that they constantly have to deal with in periods when the HVAC is running. Some users offered really innovative solutions, such as, or easy solutions, such as putting blinds on all the windows. So if you look on the map, sorry, Jay, I'm going to grab that. If you look here, all the classrooms that are here, they all have floor-to-ceiling windows, and so they cannot hide if there is an active shooter on the outside of them. And so what they were asking for is can we have blinds that covers that, that we can pull, and blinds that work, because many blinds in those buildings are not working. Some other users were asking about using walkie-talkies when they're on the playground and outside, so that they can communicate with administrators on the inside if something is happening, or if they need to send a child in, they could use that. So those are easy solutions that could be solving that. Now, in terms of severe weather events, at Mills Lawn, the users explained that they pile up everyone in a hallway, which is 370 kids in a hallway here, which is very cramped in those areas. At the high school and middle school, they try to cram students in the basement. It cannot host everybody, and then the basement gets flooded. So this is not an adequate space to handle severe weather. Plus, it takes time to go down from the tower into the basement, so there is just an issue of finding a safe place for severe weather here.
Is the basement the only place in the high school where people go?
That's what they, that's what I gathered from the answers. And then, yeah.
I believe the, some of the administrative suite in the room that Lori is in are inside the hallway and are all centralized. Those are locations that we...
So it's the room 116 that you're talking, the ones without windows? So that's the theater room, and then the administrator's office? Did you look up?
Probably.
Yeah, it's outside windows.
Yeah.
What about that inside hallway?
The conference room here, 116.
You know, you've got the...
I think our windows, right?
And then there's the hallway, and then there's...
Yeah, there's windows.
Black on the heads.
But the basement, I want to point out, is really the boiler room?
Yeah.
I mean, it's the boiler room?
Yes.
And it's...
Yes. So you're right. So in addition of being a basement that floods and that doesn't have a capacity, it is a boiler room with mechanical equipment. It's tricky to bring, yes, it's tricky to bring safely kids in there.
Which is the bigger risk?
Okay. Another safety and security issue that was brought up, it's the need for dedicated safe spaces for individuals that are experiencing dysregulation. Okay, so that's a lot of words here. And I'm going to say that I got that one from participating to the Yellow Springs Speaking Up for Justice workshop that happened a couple of weeks ago, where they talked about the need to have a space for students that experience a form of trauma, maybe a racist incident, a space where they can process and, if they are dysregulated. This is a question of safety and security for all, but there is also a question of equity in that. And then users reported experiencing electric shocks when switching off and on the lights. So it's, if you want to see which room, I'll let you look in the comments, in the user's response. So that was the safety, that was my summary of the safety and security here. I have another category of comments, which was falling under basic comfort needs are not met. Users reported that students are wearing that coat inside the classroom because it's so cold in the winter, that is, in the 1952 era of Mills Lawn. And by the way, I, because I was unclear about which part were from where, you have in the yellow paper here, you have a map with the age of each part of the building. That was something. What I did is that when I looked at the response, I filtered out by age of the building, so that I could see the trends between the 1952 and so forth. So the other basic comfort needs is that even more so that it gets so cold that students have to wear coats, is that it gets really hot, incredibly hot in there. More users reported that issue. Overall, they talked about the unreliability of the HVAC system and how it fed into other issues. So I really saw a vicious circle here, is that they're avoiding using the heat blowers or the AC units because they push dust out, because there is mold in there, because they're so loud. Sometimes they bring their own portable heating and cooling devices, which puts a strain on the electric system. Some of them want to open windows to help with controlling the temperature, but they can't because either the windows don't open, or they create new sorts of issues, like there's no screen, so they have bugs and pests coming in. So we seem to have, at the center of this, I see the HVAC as being the piece that creates other issues here. In terms of basic comfort needs, I saw a lot of comments about plumbing issues around the bathrooms and the restrooms here. So someone reported the water backing up in their classroom closet. Many reported smells coming from the bathrooms and how it was permeating the classrooms nearby, and then add heat to that, and imagine what the conditions are. Another, another type of basic comfort needs that were not met was furnishing. They were talks about, someone wrote how they play musical, musical chair in the high school because they do not have enough seating arrangements for all the students, and they have some students that have to stay up from doing classes because they don't have enough. Some of us talked about how tables were breaking as the students were taking tests. Many, many teachers talked about how they went scavenging at the Arthur Morgan Foundation to find tables and chairs for all their kids. Many talked about the mismatch of tables and chairs in the classrooms. And then the last, the last basic comfort needs that were not met was connectivity issues at the high school. There are lots of spottiness in, in getting to the internet and having it running smoothly to the point that some kids were losing connection during their tests, which is really tricky, too. Another type of category or another type, another group of comments that I've seen was the floor plan issues. And those, I think, are very important because we may, we may consider that the buildings may be salvageable and we can renovate them, but if we have floor plan issues, then we're still not meeting all of the needs. So a big theme was the lack of bathrooms or enough bathrooms in the tower at the high school. They don't have any bathrooms on the second and fourth floor. And they also have reduced capacity here in the 1957 wing, if you look at this, 1957 wings in Mills Lawn, this was a theme, too. Not enough bathroom for the staff. And all of that together, it's an equity issue for people who have reduced mobility. So let's say that someone that has reduced mobility is on the third floor, they have to take an elevator to go down. The elevator is also not entirely reliable, but it takes a long time for them to go meet a basic human need, and that means less instructional time. So it's an equity issue for people with reduced mobility, but also people that are non-binary, because they have to go find the non-binary bathroom that is on the other side of the building. It's also an equity issue for people who menstruate, and for really anybody that has a human body and needs to go to a bathroom. So the lack of bathrooms is a big floor plan issue here. The lack of space for private meetings, for counseling, guidance, tutoring, this is another equity issue, especially for kids that have special needs. But we circle back to the need of having a safe space, a private space for, for kids that are experiencing all sorts of dysregulation. The lack of space for collaborative work. And so when you think about that, that really undermines the goal of PBL, right? We're trying to attach ourselves to this specific philosophy of teaching, but if we don't have collaborative work space, then we limit ourselves in that. Another issue specific to Mills Lawn was the overlapping of gym cafeteria and performance stage, and performance stage, and how it was actually costing a lot to the district. Because when there is a performance, let's say that the high schoolers are putting together a musical called Shrek that's going to be showing this weekend, and they can't use this space because it's already used as a cafeteria and as a gym. So they have, we need to allocate money from the budget for them to rent elsewhere. And that creates a strain financially, but also it's an equity issue for kids that have to arrange transportation. Then there was also, in terms of floor plan issues, there were the issue of instructional spaces with no daylight and no ventilation at the high school. So we're talking about room 116, we're talking about many of the administrative offices, the nurse office doesn't have ability to ventilate. So think about that in the context of COVID, and how if we need to place someone in temporary isolation until they can get home, they get to a space where there is no ventilation. There were discussions also about how the lab spaces were so small, so, and specifically, if I have to be, if I have to give an example, is the proximity between the student stuff and the benzene burners were creating incidents for fires here. So they're just too cramped in that space. Also, it was pointed out that there was no water access in the cafeteria, and there was no automated dishwasher there. So I put that under floor plan because it seemed like we had the right amount of space, but not the access to the right equipment in there.
Wait, where is this at?
In the high school. Thank you. In the high school, there's no water access in the cafeteria, so people wanting to refill their bottle, having access to a fountain, and also no access to an automated dishwasher. And what that means is that they have to use disposable utensils and styrofoam, and this was one of the complaints in the survey, is how we're not in a place where we can have, we can be more environmentally conscious regarding our lunches here. And then there were so many comments about the trailers and the shoebox. So if we set aside their dire conditions, how they cause issue for the rest of the buildings. So the disruptive noise from the trailer here, how it blocks daylight, and then also think about the shoebox in terms of floor plan, and the doors are too narrow for people with mobility issue to be crossing one another, to be moving inside a room. So this is the room in which we put our most vulnerable kids with the highest needs, and it really limits how we can move within it. And that is not talking about the conditions of those, of those two trailers. So the last point that I wanted to talk about here before I, before you can ask questions and we can look at specifics, was the tie, the direct connection that I've seen between the conditions of the survey and the low morale among staff. And I want to preface the rest of what I'm going to say by, this is not a guilt trip, this is more of a discussion of how it is important to find and to identify the issues here, so that we can find a solution that works really for our staff. The other thing that I want to mention before I get into it is that the National Education Association predicts that 55% of teachers and educators are going to quit earlier than planned. So we're in a time where we have a big wave of educators leaving the industry, and in the comments that I've seen in the survey, I saw a lot of signs of low morale. Okay. So it became obvious to me that the facilities, the conditions of the facilities were leading to extra financial burden on the educators. There were stories of teachers buying a TV and a projection device while waiting for a smart screen, so that was coming out of their budget, that they were equipping their classroom to provide the 21st century education that they wanted to do. There were stories of, lots of stories of teachers buying portable heating and cooling devices, this comes out of their pocket, too. Providing lights, going and scavenging for tables and chairs, so this is also a misuse of their time, where they're going around and trying to make up for the conditions of a building. There were also a lot of comments about the state of the staff lounges in both buildings, and how it undermines the potential for collaboration and for support among staff members.
Is there a staff lounge being used in the high school right now? Because the building, no, there is not one, is there?
There is one technically, but underused, and I think it was used as, it was repurposed as the nurse's office for a while, and then there's another one that they say is too cold, too far, and it's so far...
Where is that?
So I could speak to that a little bit. So the room directly next to 116 was the original staff lounge in the original building.
On the left?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then 105 has been our staff lounge since I've been here.
In the corner, yeah.
And that was the nurses station, fourth quarter last year, when the students came back, and then they moved, the nurses station up to that room off of 116. In the process of moving that, we moved one of the photocopies upstairs to one of the rooms that connects the rooms. So that was the main reason for a lot of us to go to 105, is doing a lot of prep and then the tables for lunch. I mean, I know I haven't been over that way.
It looks like it's being used for storage.
And then if I, is not, do you want to add?
It will, storage and some meeting rooms.
Yeah.
And 105 next year will be used for a private space for students.
Okay.
As you referenced.
Okay.
Just highlights to me that there's not a staff lounge.
Yeah.
And then I think that I've read similar concerns here. There are two staff lounges in this building, and one of them that is incredibly tight, there is only one microwave, and I think table for four people. And the bathrooms that were next to it, so the people can hear anything that's happening in the bathroom as they eat. I've heard also of one where they have to choose between having the lights on and the microwave on, so they have to eat in the dark. That's the one there. Okay, that's what I gathered.
Where is that?
This one, please.
The staff lounge?
The staff lounge.
Oh, right. Yep. Here. Let me find my, okay, so most of the, most of the teachers... Let me find my uh, okay, so most of the, most of the teachers reported eating in their classroom. And of course, uh, you and I, we've talked about this because if we at some point wanted to consider the use of swing spaces, we wanted to minimize a room being occupied by one person so that we can use that. And obviously, the staff lounge is not meeting the needs so that we can do that. But on top of that, it also reduces the opportunity for collaboration and support among staff. And this is something that's gonna really undermine us in turn, in the long term in our retention and recruitment efforts. Then something else that I mentioned at the very beginning is as much as the, the users really like the green spaces around, they struggled with how open the school grounds were to the rest of the community. So they've had to, they've had to handle, to manage strangers on the grounds. So because of a lack of a fence around the playground, but also they, they had to handle people sleeping or living under the bleachers at the high school. They had to handle dog feces, broken glass, and trash. This was on the staff to do and this cannot um, come across as uh, as doubting their work if they have to put all that work into handling the trash of a community, of a misuse of a community, of a school grounds. Several users reported health issues that they connected to the facilities. One reported that their doctors diagnosed them with school allergies because their symptoms would flare up in August, September as they were coming back after breaks. And they were not the only one to mention such, having to deal with health issues, respiratory issues mainly. Several users used the word embarrassment when they talked about the high school. That they felt when there were visits from other schools or when other candidates came to be interviewed, they felt just, they use that word. And then there are lots of lost opportunities for teachers because of the facilities. One example is that the gym doesn't meet the requirements for OHSAA athletics. And so those are missed opportunities as educators, but they feel.
But do you wanna explain that?
Yeah, so the gym doesn't meet uh, the requirements for being part of the Ohio.
It, it, we're part of OHSAA. It is not a tournament-sized gym. It's not, it's not a regulation-sized court.
Okay.
So we can play our games in it.
Yeah.
But if we were ever to consider having a tournament, which is the way, the way schools make money, they host tournaments, we, we just would not be able to do that.
It, it has to do with the spaces around the gym, the basketball floor, correct?
It has to do with capacity, but also for a high school, our, our court is not regulation-sized. We're about, we're about four feet shy, which is a considerable amount. So.
Cause I thought Jeff had said that the basketball court was regulation, but there wasn't enough space beyond, you know, when you're running to do a, what do you call it?
We're talking about the space between the baseline and the wall, right?
And the wall.
Yeah, there's not space there, but it, it also is actually short.
It's actually short.
So those, those are just my takeaways. I know that I took a fair amount of time. I wanted to see if Brian and Ken wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, I got some items from a few colleagues, but so with the doors opening outward, the other issue with that is that kids get hit in the hallway because you can't see them. So you fling the door open, you get hit.
How does that, how does that work given fire safety? Is it fire safety, you said that it passed you out that way?
So.
Only if you exceed fifty people in the room.
Say again?
I believe only if you exceed fifty people in the room.
Do they need to go out?
Does it need to swing out, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And then you also need two means of egress in a room of that size. But I believe a single classroom can't have doors that swing in and meet code.
They can.
Yeah.
So that was, the other thing is, I think this kind of ties to the layout issues. That if you're moving grade levels, even if it's just one grade level, a lot of times you have to move classrooms. And so that makes it difficult for teachers. You know, so in a small school, moving is understood because.
You mean of moving a teacher from a classroom to another between academic years, from an academic year to another?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but that was something that came up.
Wait, I didn't understand what you said, sorry.
Yeah, so when you have to move rooms because you're moving grade levels.
With teachers, you as a teacher have, or we have a different.
Yeah. So that makes it difficult, especially if you've established yourself in a room. You've created your space, you've gotta leave that. So I've heard that from a few people.
And that would happen because by instance, right now we have a wave of three first grades classes and then they're gonna become a.
Isn't this an issue in most?
Three second grades and then we have to move.
Do other schools do something different or in terms of?
In many schools, the layout of the building would allow the teacher to stay in that room, but still switch to another room. And so then we have reiterating goals. From time to time, getting kicked off the internet, there's two. And then just reiterating the toilets on, in the nineteen fifty-seven section, that's in the fifth grade. Those are actually abutting the fifth grade classrooms. So when someone uses that bathroom, everyone in the room can hear everything happening. So um, that's particularly difficult. They had to close those bathrooms off during testing because it would have been too distracting. But it's still, some children still use them.
And, and those are children, not the staff.
Those are children's bathrooms up there.
Singles, singles.
They're single stalls because it used to be, I think, a first or kindergarten classroom. So the, there's a door on the other side in those fifth grade classrooms. So they block the door off that goes into the classroom, but that's still there so they can hear through that door. And so that was just, and those don't lock because.
But as a parent, I can tell you like this is, this leads to constipation in kids completely, but okay, yeah.
Yeah, when, if you know people can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, my child is in one of those classrooms and she's like, I don't ever use those bathrooms. So just, that's it.
Thank you. Brian, did you wanna add anything?
I'll add that in the, and I don't know as much about these two hallways here because I mostly either they're in my modular. But in the high school, regardless of um, repeated and, and um, repeated, I don't know, it was something like that, but repeated roof maintenance, the transitions between sections of buildings are always an issue. So where the um, room one fifteen and one thirteen meet the wall of the uh, gym, that cross in the hallway there, almost every time we have a major storm, we need one of those big red trashcans from the cafeteria in there for the waterfall that comes through the ceiling. The transition from my building into that glass hallway, in the last years, I've seen more and more leaks and it's discoloring the whatever ceiling uh, texture is there. And then, yeah, we've got ceiling tile stuff all over the place. And the um, this is not a you, uh, staff user issue, but I, I've got antebellum evidence from many, many students who are avoiding using restrooms for a number of reasons and the conditions are, are top of the list.
Can I add to Brian's restroom comment? At the high school, um, for students, there are only those restrooms in the hall that lead to the cafeteria and two singles in the shoeboxes. There are restrooms back on the other side of the gym as you go out to the parking lot. Those are the ones we open during games. To have those open regularly during the school day, in my mind, is a huge safety concern because there is no one back there. It's not really close to any classroom. And so that in effect, these one single set of bathrooms for our students. What is it, four stalls maybe?
Depends on the huge lines, that's what I kept reading, the huge lines of stairs.
Huge lines or, you know, I'm gonna principal, I know what kids do. They say, I'm not going in the bathroom at school. That's not a wise choice.
Can you confirm something too, is that high schoolers are being, going to use the bathrooms in the middle school part?
And the same stalls?
I think there's some, I think there's some. We, we, we have made it, made it an issue to communicate to the students to use the restroom closest to your room. And that all, doesn't always take. And I'll say just as a user of those back in the late nineties, early two thousands, I was one of those kids that avoided using the restroom during the day. Mainly just the, the multi-age uh, issue of the main hallway bathrooms is, as a seventh, eighth grader, I didn't want to be in there at the same time as a tenth, eleventh, twelfth grader, so.
The space up at two oh four, and there were restrooms there and all the plumbing is still under the floor and in the walls. I think it's been used as a small teacher's office at the moment.
That, is that the one that's used as a teacher retro?
There's a staff, yeah.
Staff restroom?
No, the, so the original, I think the original women's restroom is where Donna Haller's classroom is now. And then the men's restroom is now staff bathroom upstairs.
And, and they, if there was space to move around, they could be brought back into use. All, all the drains are there, but they were just cut off under the floor.
Maybe, but there is a comment in the spreadsheet from the users about that staff bathroom and, and issues with that. And I would suspect that there would be parallel issues with.
I don't remember, I'm gonna say this.
Yeah.
It's hard. I'll try to track it down. Any questions from all the people?
You mentioned the, the trailers that are out here.
Yes.
In your thing, but my understanding is the trailers are not being used now.
No, it's my classroom.
They were not, they, so they.
I, I, I was told it was just stored stuff.
No, the second room is, the first room is mine.
Okay.
That's where I've been since I started teaching here, yeah.
And the second room is being used?
I will also say that the second um, room is being used by our mental health therapist for um, for some group therapy.
Really?
Yeah. When I started working here, it was the.
Storage.
Right.
Gifted and talented in the news production, in the studio news production. And then they moved that into the second office off the gym.
So David, if you look at modular one here on this map, this is where Brian teaches right now.
Yeah.
And if you look at the users that gave the answer, uh, noise too disruptive, this is nine, ten, eleven.
Oh, yeah.
And it became much more of an issue this year needing to have my doors and windows all open for the airflow.
Exactly.
Stuff in the fall.
Exactly.
Other questions?
There's a, there's a, there's a second room.
Uh, I wanted, I forgot something. I realized that I did not in my comments talk about the floor plan issues in your classroom in the high school. Is that the way that this building is set up as a twelve-sided um, form or shape? You say that students cannot see whatever screen you use from all sides, but you need to bring them in the middle. There's also questions about accessibility, students of all mobility cannot use that room and go down the steps. There are several, you have a lot of blind spots with the storage units and so you can't guarantee safety of students. So uh, there are floor plan issues with the use of that specific part.
And we have uh, two community groups that share that space that are ranging age from, you know, twenty to seventy. So they're coming in, there's no handrails to get down to the different levels or on the stairs. And then the uh, when Craig Carter and I were talking about it, they looked and said, there's really not enough room in either direction to build the ADA um, level ramp. Your, the ramp would be long enough to hit the, the level on the other side of the room. For me personally, the, there's also the issue that um, the doors in that room don't allow us to get all of our equipment in and out. So one time we used, when I was in high school, we used the Grand Canyon for a performance. We had hired a, you know, moving company to pick it up and take it out and retune it in the gym and do the reverse an hour later. Most schools will have a, a double section door where you can roll up and have it in there if you find a space.
Do you like the sound of the room being round as a musician?
Um, in, in acoustic terms, it's called a very dry room, meaning it has no echo, or very little echo.
Yeah.
The benefit there, um, I don't know, outweighs the limited flexibility of me being able to re-seat students or to move and do different activities.
What I was saying is it's round or whatever. If you just blow it out, expand it out and make it the way you want it, give you the space for wheelchair access.
Definitely something I've seen in other buildings, they have the built outs. I'm not, I'm not in love with the, the level floor seating. I've been in many other near, near rectangle rooms in Northern Columbus for rehearsals that I'm in and um, they seem to have a lot more flexibility pedag- pedagogically and there's enough uh, sound features in there that they eliminate most of the acoustical issues.
I was just thinking, cause there's, there's nothing but grass out there, blow it out. There's a sidewalk that goes all the way around, if it could be configured to what you want.
What about the five?
Um, it logistically could seat about fifty-five and that's elbows to elbows. We've had about fifty in there with the adult band and choir. The storage is pretty limited. And the, actually the length, the distance front to back of those levels is really tight. We get things knocked over and it's, you know, it's kind of safety have, little safety hazards you don't think about all over the place. But uh, I mean, it's a double-edged sword for me. I grew up in that room and I've taught for more than that amount of time in it. But also I'd like to be able to do a couple of the things that I've seen my colleagues do at other locations.
Is your office in there?
Yeah, it's one of the two rooms at the bottom of the stairs. Those rooms are very oddly shaped too.
They're very what?
Oddly shaped, yeah.
So, so to give people an idea of a, the ramp ratio that you would need to put a ramp at the board office, it would have to wrap around basically the entire building. That, that's how long the ramp would.
To get the right incline.
Yes, to get the incline that, that's ADA currently, so.
Is it six steps up to the board office?
I can't, it's not, but I, I know, you know, it's, it's not, it's not that high. You don't think that it's that high, but yeah, it would have to go around one side, the backside, and even come along the, the third side there.
It's one foot for every, one foot of length for every inch of rise.
Right.
So if there's eight steps or six steps over there, you would need a forty-eight foot long ramp.
Yeah.
And then there is the issue that you have offices in the basement there. We're not talking about the offices there, but even if you were getting the accessibility to the main floor and you still wouldn't have the accessibility to the downstairs office spaces.
Other comments or should we switch gears here?
Dorothy, I think that you did a wonderful job just capturing like the observations and the concerns and the needs of the teachers. And I thank you because that was a really good presentation. And after sitting down, well, eating my dinner last night with my computer, I think that you just captured everything that, that teachers wanted you to, so thank you.
And I wanna acknowledge, but I haven't included every single issue, I just tried to catch your attention. Mike, did you, I thought you had a question.
Okay, well, let's go on to, hang on, let's look back here, um, to the experts' reports. One thing I failed to mention is that um, Michael and Scott, we met with Bill Griffiths. As Megan has suggested, I reached out to Eli, but I've not heard back from him yet. Eli Urwitz, who works with students around um, computer, you know, education. So we had a meeting with him and then this afternoon, Michael and I, David and.
Mary.
And, and yeah, Jerry. When we walked down the hall here, we talked with teachers and it was interesting, uh, the information, you know, we were gathering from Bill in terms of, you know, the fact we have MAVECA right here. We, we've got a lot of resource here for, for our IT. But yet there seems to be issues in the building that, you know, that we're not, that the teachers are not seeing kind of the fruits of that uh, uh, what we have. We should be able to have with MAVECA right here. So I, so anyway, why don't we start with you guys, what you learned about the system? So these are, like I say, beginning uh, reports from experts looking at systems. The most, this was the only day we've been here in grade school, but so why don't you guys start with your.
Am I on the right document here?
Oh, that's there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
There it is. So I don't know which one you wanna start.
Well, I'll just, we've got basically a short electrical part, because I think you're gonna cover some of that too.
going to cover some of that too, but um, most of this was at the high school, as the students said, we didn't get into here till today, so.
As far as the electrical capabilities of boxes.
They're current and safe, uh, but they can be added to, upgraded, you know, for added capacity as whatever the design becomes in the school, in the high school. They look like they can be addressed in a minimum fashion. Power outlets, everybody wants more power outlets, I heard that today from all the teachers. Again, that's pretty much an easy thing to do from an electrical standpoint. I think the big thing is to understand what teachers at Mills Lawn need versus teachers at the high school, everybody has a slightly different requirement for their space and what they want to do with their students, so I think one of the keys is understanding what those needs are, as Brian, your, whatever your needs may be, uh, is going to be critical, whatever happens down the road. Scott, you have USB charging stations. We've talked a lot about computers, uh, different ways to charge them and have them ready for the next day, whether it's through USB ports, additional outlets. I, I'm thinking about charging stations type of thing, things like you see in an airport, you know, when you get a gate, you want to charge up quickly. So I think we need to understand what the needs are at this school and the high school to address that, but I don't see that as a major issue. But all in all, we can bring more power into both schools, the panels are okay, they can be upgraded, I haven't seen dangers, one of them has some old switches, I think we talked about earlier.
Pushmatics.
Pushmatics, that all can be changed out, so from just an, an over the top electrical look, I think we're, I think we're fine.
So that was just at the high school, right? I couldn't quite tell from those documents.
We went, uh, well, today I looked at the panels here.
Okay.
Uh, but this, this is addressing primarily the high school, but the panels here are in great shape also. So if we need more power, which we're probably going to need more power, cause everybody wants screens or this or that, or whatever it may be, we can bring it in, is kind of the message, so.
I have a question.
Yep.
So are you saying that if there is, let's say, the gymnasium's air conditioned, or there's some addition that goes on to the building, you're not saying that we may not, we may not need a full electrical service upgrade, or are you? Are you saying this?
I'm saying we don't need, we won't need a full, we can, we can add to what we have.
There's current capacity to support adding to the gym.
Capacity to bring everything in. If we need to add another box, we'll add another box, but I don't think we need a major overhaul of the system, is what I'm saying.
That would be one of the things I would want a professional electrical engineer on
Absolutely.
Be a team to verify.
Absolutely.
My ears perked up when I heard that.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, it depends what we do.
Yeah.
Absolutely, it all hinges on that, so.
And it could always be brought in as a separate feat, leaving what we've got doing what it's doing.
Scott, did you want to add in regards to what we learned about, in terms of your, uh, when we talked to Bill Griffiths, um, regarding, you know, just the IT, uh, possible, you know, what MAVECA brings to the schools and.
Well, I, I, I'm not certain to what extent everyone is aware of the resource that MAVECA is.
Yeah.
To us, it's a tremendous asset. School children in about, roughly sixty-five thousand school children in about eight counties all get their internet right through Yellow Springs, Ohio. It comes right into this village, and then it gets dispersed through MAVECA out to a bunch of different places, which means they have a lot of infrastructure, they have a lot of bandwidth, they have people that know how to deal with that stuff, uh, and we are beneficiaries of all that. The fact that we are able to have direct fiber connections from both of these facilities to MAVECA is something that most school districts would just kill to have. Uh, I, I can't overstate the importance of that, that fact. Now, that has only a tiny about, tiny bit to do with our, our task here, but it's still an important, important thing to, to keep in mind. And I just, I'm grateful that we've got that resource, and I hope the school district will continue to leverage the tech out of it for as long as it's there, uh, cause it's a tremendous resource. It's really all it has.
Well, we talked about, um, you know, the, the whiteboards and.
Yeah.
We talked about copy, the, you know, the need for effective copying and so on.
So, so there's, you know, as you said, so there's, there's a lot of capacities, there's plenty of fiber here for growth now and in the future, because MAVECA is, is here. We've got, I think we came up with seventy-two wireless connection points uh, in both schools. It was nice to talk to the teachers today, cause we found there's some spots where there's some issues in connecting, whereas when we talked to Bill, Bill says that should be enough. So those kind of details, it's going to be great to talk to each teacher in whatever their room is and find out what's happening, what isn't happening, so. Uh, but as far as the, the equipment you're using, the routers and everything, it's all great, it's all state of the art, Cisco's pretty much the kind of that business. One thing to think about, we, we heard some comments about the printing stations in here and at the high school, so maybe whatever happens here and at the high school, we need to look at reconfiguring those rooms and make them work for you. There are some issues, we heard a few issues going around, but what are the particulars? There's, you know, getting together with what stations the teachers use, I heard when you print some things, sometimes you can't stop it, it continues to print, so some software and some connection issues that need to be resolved, and maybe those rooms need to be settled somewhere else in whatever the configuration needs to be, same thing at the high school.
I wanted to jump on that if you don't mind, Michael. Uh, I remember one comment explained that a copier was in the central room of the tower and would not work because it was so humid in there, it was a favorite mistake.
Okay.
So we're talking about uh, technology in, in here, but it ties back to HVAC and humidity control, that issue that we have in buildings, and how the HVAC creates issues in other things.
And I would add to that, there really are, in my mind, there are really a couple of areas where the intersection between the technology, infrastructure, and the larger building issues are pretty important, and those are, uh, first and foremost, the locations for the, what we call MDFs and IDFs, the wiring closets, the, the places where you put servers and switches and all that stuff. Uh, I have yet to be in a school that is as old as any, either of these buildings, where there was a sufficient location for that stuff, because when those buildings were built, that need wasn't there, and so there was no place built to say, well, let's make a room that's secure, that we can lock, that, that's got adequate ventilation, and is equipped to run a bunch of really hot running electrical equipment. Now, that, that never happened, so every wiring closet I've ever been in, unless it was newly built, is, is utterly inadequate, and that's something that ought to be paid attention to, in my opinion, however you do it.
Cause basically those end up in like old broom closets, whatever, whatever's available, whatever's available. And I mean, I can know like for HVAC systems, like when, when they build new schools, the HVAC system for those rooms is specially designed because they're kept at a lower temperature than what you would try to keep students at, and it, yeah, the, the airflow, and, and it's also built almost like separate and with a backup cooling system, because if that room gets too hot, I mean, it's not, you know, a classroom, you can open some windows, you can do some things to mitigate, but the server, if the server goes down, then, then pretty much all learning stops for the day.
Yeah, there's, there's servers now, I mean, there's no temperature issue, but they're sharing rooms, you guys, there's paper stored in there and other supplies, so. Bill would like to have his own room where he can go in there and do a diagnosis and whatever, and, and it's secure, he doesn't have to worry about somebody coming in there grabbing a piece of paper and hitting something on the keyboard or pulling a connector out, so. Security is a big feature for those rooms. I don't think there's an issue because you don't have a whole room full of servers, where you need a super controlled environment, if you have a few pieces in there and it's not super sensitive to, if it's a hot day or anything like that, but it's a security issue.
It's a security issue, it's an electrical supply issue, it's a, um, it's a ventilation issue as well, but maybe to a lesser extent. The other thing, and this is really what you were saying earlier, is um, the whole problem of how you get printed output from student work and teacher work and so forth is a, is a thorny one, and all kinds of things have been tried over the years. Uh, I believe it's fair to say that most school environments are moving toward centralized print stations, instead of trying to have a printer in every classroom, you move towards centralized print stations where you can utilize larger devices that can copy and print things faster and more economically, and then you find ways to, you know, handle all the ergonomics and the, you know, you, you have a student that's dedicated to go and get stuff off the printer when it happens, if, if it's in an elementary building or whatever. Those spaces were never built into old buildings either, and so there really aren't good places to, to locate those kinds of things. If you're doing any kind of room, uh, building reconfiguration or new construction, that, those ought to be planned into it, rather than, uh, oh gosh, we didn't think about working with a printer.
I think sometimes the, the need for the stable infrastructure that you don't see is understated. We had a day in December last year when we were teaching online, where MAVECA went down for two and a half hours, and you can do it, you know, we were, we were standing around talking to each other for a while until it all came back up, and I was communicating with people at other schools that were MAVECA schools, and I said, are you guys down too? You guys are down too?
Somebody augured the wrong spot, um, cause I, I was at the office that day in another school district when, when that happened, and.
Someone did what?
Augured.
They, they broke a major.
Somebody, somebody didn't call, uh, call before you dig. And, and it caused basically, like, a countywide outage for every single school district that relies on MAVECA's internet.
Okay.
They stopped after they, they hit it.
Yeah.
But it was, it was a big, it was a big lumps. Um, they were putting, they were putting up something really large, I can't remember what it was, and uh.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I remember that was a day that work, work stopped for everybody, and it, it took more than, I thought it was more than two and a half hours, I thought it was down for quite some time.
It was a good amount of time.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty much a day.
Wouldn't that pale in comparison to, let's say, your switches going out in the middle of testing? You know, if your Cisco infrastructure went down in the middle of testing, that'd be a worse nightmare right then.
So can I ask a question about this? Is that, um, I'm still glad that we have MAVECA in town, because there are resources, and, and I see how lucky we are that they're in town, but we still are dealing with some connectivity, uh, issues in the buildings, and I still, um, so I'm seeing, I'm hearing that opportunity, and I'm hearing from the users' point of view how it is sometimes unreliable. So where do you think?
So there, you are going to have issues, connectivity issues, you've got a system in the school.
Yeah.
And when we walked around today and had a conversation, you've got some dead spots, so that's all fixable.
Okay.
We, we can figure out why that's happened, whatever the reason is, we need a, we need a boost signal in the kindergarten room.
Okay.
But when we went to the middle of the building, talked to Makasa and to other teachers, and they're fine, they're in the middle of the building.
So they're.
That's all.
So we need to map out, so maybe one step here is mapping out those dead spots.
And find out what, where those spots are, and that is, that's all fixable.
The system was designed on paper to say, oh, we're going to put one wireless access point for each classroom.
Yeah.
And on paper, that might work fine, but where the rubber meets the road is, if the teacher's in a classroom and they don't have a signal, they don't have a signal.
Okay.
So then, then, you know, no matter what's on paper, that has to be fixed.
Exactly. So, I'm sorry, Judith.
The key with, with this infrastructure for your IT is whatever we do with the buildings, whether we upgrade them or whatever, ceilings come down, then we have an opportunity to run cables and reroute things and do everything you need, make sure you get a signal over here and over here and over here. When there's nothing up there but a, a, a way to run cables, it's really easy. Outlets, CAT six connectors we need to upgrade, uh, from old.
Okay.
CAT five connectors, I'm sure you have some that we don't know about, but you do all that stuff during that process. But as far as the dead spots with the wireless, that, we can fix that, I don't see that as being an issue.
So I think this is where it would be useful in the spreadsheet to highlight which classrooms are reporting with issues, that we can map those out.
Sure, sure. You've got a lot of that information to this question.
Yeah, I'm sure that we should do another pass with the staff to make sure we're not forgetting some, but they were a fair amount of those things.
The other thing we saw is you've got screens and projectors and different things in, in rooms, and, you know, those projectors, as Terry said, we were talking about, they're outdated, so whatever we do, you know, we upgrade to whatever the next latest thing. If we do this, uh, if we go with, you know, whatever each classroom may need, we need to find out specifically what they need at Mills Lawn, what they need at the high school, and it can be addressed. I kind of recommend too having a hard wire connection almost in every room, if we break it all apart and not rely on wireless totally. If you've got a teacher trying to make a PowerPoint presentation and you want to have a hard wire connect, you just don't want that to go down. There's issues with Chromebooks and Bluetooth connections and signals get dropped, it just, stuff happens, so. But that, at the time, we renovate, or whatever happens with the buildings, we can run all those cables, we can reroute everything, we can move it to where it needs to be and take care of those issues that are happening now, so.
I do, I do have a few more questions, so that's okay with you. Um, I saw the comment about the telephone and internal communication and how it was operational. Uh, I wanted to add to this, that, um, in the high school, there were so many comments about people wanting to reach out to Julie, what is her role? She's the.
Julie Cosler?
No.
Special supervisor.
Oh, no.
Special supervisor, and they could not reach her because she doesn't have a phone in her office, and so, uh, as we think about that, we should also make sure that we are highlighting the stakeholders that should have a phone, uh, and that should be, uh, looked into that, uh, into that phone system here, because they are not needing correct people.
That's a provisioning issue more than a.
Yes, it's not technological, but as we think, we might talk about expanding it.
And you can do that with the system, you have the voice system over the Cisco switch.
The, the smart system we have is not a Cisco system, it's a Cisco imitation system.
Oh, okay.
So it, there, there are, there are some problems with it. I think that, I think there was a, that was a price point decision made in the past, um, so, but, you know, it's certainly more of an easier fix than, um.
And then, and then the part about security is that we need more because it's, um, the lack of key paths, minutes, some.
Well, the security thing, when we were talking about it, um, cameras, more cameras, what, what you have now, I don't know exactly what they have at the high school, we've talked about.
Yeah.
Intrusion, door locks, all that thing, that may be something that you can contract to MAVECA where they can control that versus you controlling it in the school, they're right across the road from you, they're experts at that stuff, so they can control fire alarms, all that stuff, and make sure the software is up to date, and if something happens, whatever it might be, they've got their hands around it.
I, I think, I think that we need, from what I understand, we need people in the office to also look at who is presenting and coming in there, there is that level of, of looking, that it needs to be people that know, that can recognize, whatever basis.
And we did, we, we have increased our cameras, et cetera.
Yeah.
But unless I'm remembering incorrectly, there were, we, there were issues about, we couldn't place them everywhere, same with readers on the doors, because we got those when I came, and, and it just, we weren't able to put as many in as we could, and that was a function of kind of some of the limitations of, of the buildings.
Right. And then that also can become a function of whichever system you purchase, uh, you know, will handle X number of cameras and X number of channers, and if there's a disk based problem, that might be the part of the equation that you could outsource to MAVECA to say, yeah, why don't you, you host it on a server, you store all the stuff, we're still going to have somebody here looking at the camera monitors, deciding who hits in the door, you know, and that kind of thing.
So they keep the tapes.
If you be a server, you don't have.
Data, you know, if you say, what happened on Tuesday, blah, 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 and they can go pull that for you, you don't have to worry about it. This guy was coming in the back door, we got a picture of him, so.
Okay, I'm going to move forward because we've got a fair amount to cover yet.
Can I just have?
And that was a great.
Can I just make one comment?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you for a, a really good report. I would say this focuses on backbone stuff, and you mentioned a scope that was missing, but I want to emphasize it, which was the, the user interface with the technology. So for example, if you would have got, if you would have got a new building, your, your typical classroom would have had a, an ultra short throw projector, what they call.
what they call an interactive whiteboard where the technology's in the pen. There had been an audio system to be able to play back music or whatever the video is. There had been a voice amplification system. I don't know if you use those much, but it's a little lapel mic. And then the sound is distributed around the room. There would've been a teacher's technology outlet, some type of system to show video. There could be a centralized video system where they could show video to all the first grade classrooms or things like that. So I just, I think that's important. Like if, if the vision is, hey, we're gonna renovate a building and you're probably not gonna bring a little tech back in. What does that new tech look like? Elementary teachers love the Elmos, the document cameras. So that's all a pretty big price component of the whole tech package. It was just something to consider.
It's huge. It's also, in my experience, not a one size fits all. Even within an elementary school, different teachers at different grade levels are gonna use this technology in very different ways. And at the high school, it tends to run more across subject areas. And an English teacher will use stuff very differently than a science teacher will and probably needs different stuff. And that's, you know, the, yep, yep, I do think you have to watch the one size fits all approach. We're just gonna give everybody the same, the same thing.
So do you individualize it to the teacher?
I'm sorry?
Do you individualize it?
Well, it's pretty hard to do that, but I, I do think it's appropriate to, to talk to your science teachers and say, okay, what's the most important technology for teaching science? What's the most important technology for teaching music education? What's, you know, because they all have...
And then at the different grade levels, you're talking to them.
Yeah, they have different needs.
Yeah, I wanna know, what, what do you want? What, what do you like?
And listening to what he just said with that, you know, with that package, I would say that in Mills Lawn and other, you know, buildings that I have been in, K five, K six, K eight, all the teachers would use everything that he said. They would just use it differently. But they would need everything that he just mentioned.
That feels like the minimum standard? And then what do we need on top of that?
On top of it, yeah.
Specialized needs?
The Elmo, if you, if you don't understand what that is, is a killer piece of educational technology. It's just, I don't know, any teacher that's used one would give it up.
Well, now I have to look it up.
Well, it's, it's basically the device that replaced the overhead opaque projector.
Projector.
You, you put something down here. It might be a piece of paper. It might be a book. It might be a picture, a drawing. Or it could be a live bug that's crawling around and it gets made large and put up there for everybody to see.
Okay, why don't we go to Jerry? Do you wanna talk about what, what you've figured out so far or?
You can read most of my report. I gave her some high points. I did add something this afternoon, which Gortez touched on, which I think is important.
Oh, thank you.
As far as the HVAC system at the high school, it's accomplished by numerous rooftop mount, roof mounted condensing units. And the age of those units ranges from 10 to 20 years. School has three gas fired boilers and a hot water boiler. I'm sorry, gas fired hot water boilers along with gas fired electric resistance heaters that are in the air handlers. It's, it's felt, it's felt that the current HVAC system, the equipment is likely adequate to handle the, the current class, classroom heating and cooling loads. And note that the gym and the hallways aren't air conditioned. But the HVAC system, control system is, is very problematic. And replacement of that control system is likely advisable. That was installed 11 years ago. The contractor that installed it, in my opinion, didn't do a good job and didn't follow through on making it work. So, but the equipment is like, for the existing facilities, equipment probably has, likely has the capacity to heat and cool the building. But it seems like the control system is a disaster. What I did wanna touch upon is the indoor, indoor air quality. It's questionable whether the current, what's known as ASHRAY, which is the American Society of Refrigeration, Heating and Air Conditioning Engineers, building ventilation standards are being met. And this needs to be explored, especially in light of the current pandemic. And that issue along with air filtration systems, materials and replacement schedules needs to be addressed by the maintenance plan advisor and their evaluation of the, of the HVAC systems. The plumbing at the high school, some of it is original. There was a, a large galvanized service line that failed about 10 years ago. And that was the main service line. And it experienced a leak in an underground accessible area. And they fitted that with a copper liner pipe, which reportedly still provides adequate flow and remains trouble free. There's another underground, underground galvanized line, which is susceptible to corrosion, which runs over to the locker room area. But when they did the 2002 edition, the maintenance folks had valves installed. So if that line fails, it can be replaced overhead without addressing the underground line. The restroom, the two, the two restrooms, student restrooms have been upgraded. They're piled. They're well maintained. They have modern fixtures. But...
Which ones are you talking about, Jerry?
In the high school.
No, no, I know, but the...
The two student restaurant, restrooms at the end of the hallway. Yeah.
By the end of...
On the first floor.
Yeah, by the cafeteria.
Right. Those are felt to be adequate. Obviously, there's a problem in the three story structure with inadequate restrooms. And that definitely needs to be addressed. And possibly maybe additional restrooms in other portions of the school. Where are the other high points here?
Jerry, what was the comment on the, the air conditioning under controls for that? Remember under, and... Minisets?
Well, the whole control system needs, the whole control system needs to be upgraded.
Oh yeah, but you were talking more about your borders then, but it's like for the air conditioning and all of that as well.
All the controls for the, for the heating, ventilation and air conditioning system likely needs to be replaced.
Controls are the brain of the HVAC and...
They had, the, the system was originally installed with what are called pneumatic controls. And they're still in operation out there, but they interface with a programmable controller that was installed when they air conditioned the three story tower. And it's a disaster.
It never worked properly.
Well, it never worked properly, yeah, from the get go.
And the minisets, which are, which are not on that system, their controls don't work either.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. But they're, they're...
All the controls need to be, need to be looked at. What else? As far as some other comments out there, I would like to mention that as far as the modular units go, there, there was a comment made about there's moisture mildew problems in those, in the modular classrooms. An inspection of the building from the outside, we noticed that the foundation, the size of the foundation exceeds the, the size of the, of the building itself. And it's open concrete block. Water runs down the face of the, of the, of the brickwork and runs into the concrete block foundation and then can get underneath the modular units. In addition to that, there was never any vapor barrier, barrier put down below the floor in those modular units. So if, either long term or short term, if they would install a concrete mortar cove at the base of that wall to cover up the openings in the foundation block and put some plastic sheeting for vapor barrier underneath the, underneath those modular units, that would significantly improve that issue. I know Jack told me that, that had to run air conditioning in the summer because of moisture mildew problems in there as well. That's, that's one thing to do to mitigate that. Nate will probably discuss this, but most of the original windows in the high school have been replaced with thermal pane windows. And they were originally designed to open, but there were security issues. And so the maintenance folks disabled that. So those windows can't be opened. They're permanently shut because students would open them during the day and then come back at night and get in the building. So the, the windows in that building, for the most part, are in pretty good shape. As has been said by some other people and before, I was out there on structural inspection a few years back. That building is, is designed such that the, most of the interior walls can be demolished. And so that building can be reconfigured. The walls that are there can, can disappear. So you kinda, kinda got a blank sheet of paper as far as reconfiguring that building.
That's in the tower?
In the tower. And I think they've also noted that you could even take out the wall that's underneath the overhang and expand it out toward the driveway there by the cafeteria. So there's some, there's some flexibility there. There is an unused elevator shaft in that, in that portion of the building, the three story building too, that can also be used as a vertical pipe chase for, vertical chase for ducts, wiring, plumbing, whatever. So that's kind of a, an asset to their, to the building. There, there are aspects of the Ohio building, of the building that don't meet the current Ohio building code or OSHA or ADA requirements for new construction. Some of those may be grandfathered in and some may require upgrade by building officials if, if it's not addressed by choice. So those things need to be looked at. And then my last comment regarding high school is there, there appears to be a lack of storage space at the facility as evidenced by materials, equipment being stored in areas intended for other use. When I looked at the locker rooms and the showers were full of bicycles.
The showers also don't function. I mean, that's, that's why they use this storage.
Well, I, I was told by folks who attended school out there that the students never used the showers in, in the last two decades, even when they were operational. But if they were to be used, the showers would have to be, would have to be renovated. We did take a look at, a brief look at Mills Lawn today. Some of the high, high points there is that the heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems, restrooms, windows in the 1952 part of the building all need significant improvements. There's some deteriorated concrete out here near the door accessing the playgrounds here on the north side of the building. That, that needs to be replaced. And when we do that, it needs to be ADA accessible as well. There's a site drainage issue over here at the southeast corner of the choir room that needs to be addressed. And then the universal problem of sound disturbance associated with the band room located behind the school. So that's the brief takeaway from the Mills Lawn tour this afternoon.
Can I clarify one minute?
Sure.
When you said that the gym and the hallways are the only spaces that aren't air conditioned, technically the music room at the high school is only run on window units and one mobile unit that were added afterwards. So I'm also not on the AC side of that system. And then the modular out here, for my room, the AC unit is to the point where MSD cannot find the leak in the minis, or whatever the, the system that they have. So Craig installed a window unit with wind vents and it, it barely keeps up in August and, and April or May.
Well, some definitely need to be done about that.
Yeah.
Band space out there.
Also, I, oh, just, I heard HVAC for the 1952 section, but the 1957 section...
That's all, that's all the further we got was just that. We haven't seen, we haven't gotten further. So we've got further to go.
I, I want to add, what you said about the, the bathrooms in the high school is that I'm glad to hear that they are in functioning order, but we still have the capacity issue, you know, the number of stalls.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say that there were more bathrooms in the high school and they were in the tower and they were removed for, I'm not sure what, for classroom or office or something like that.
No, they were being vandalized by the students and that was the response.
That was the response. You, you students way back then, no. Anyway, but anyway, I also wanted to say in terms of the locker rooms, the shower's not working. That's been true for, from what I can understand, over 25 years, that they have not been, that they were, the school decided to not have them function. I mean, that, you know, it's, it's not an issue of deterioration of the locker rooms. It's an issue of, there was a decision made basically to not have those showers working. Cause they have not been working for 25 years at least.
I think there's also the, I mean, there's a big difference in how locker rooms were built in those buildings compared to how they are now. With student comfort and, and, you know, taking a shower out in front of all of your peers was something 20 years ago was completely acceptable. Today it's just not. So like the standards of, I think locker rooms have changed significantly. And then even when I think about plumbing in the high school, the main bathrooms are the ones that work. The ones in the McKinney side, the more of those where it's get flushed, the more odor we get in the classrooms. So like there's some other issue around some, something in the plumbing there. And then the staff restrooms in the back of the office, those are continually a problem, a drainage problem as far as having to have them snaked out regularly. And I don't know, I don't know what the structural integrity of those lines are running under the building. But the, and then the new bathrooms in the new part, those are fine, but the, the middle school and the staff ones are the most problematic ones.
It's, it's pretty clear that there's at least a lot more bathrooms in the high school.
It's quite likely that jam, smoke that over your gym there is the same. There's, all the heat and air is up on the roof and there are air intakes. There's fresh air intakes on those. And your vent pipes are probably coming out fairly close to them and because they're all lined up along there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you think that would be the same thing in 1952 in the link? Because we have...
But the toilet smell down there is from the urinals. And it needs the, those, those pots, those oil pots need to be changed out. They get changed twice a year. Maybe we should up them to three times a year.
Because of the usage?
Yeah, yeah.
And then my question was either for you or maybe Mike about the noise and how loud HVAC gets to a point that they can't hear emergency announcements. So what can be done for...
That needs to be replaced. We don't, we don't need to use it very much.
No, but they also talked about the heaters.
Yeah, the one that comes off the office of the high school into the nurses station and then the lawyers room is pretty loud.
But, but also the, the heaters, the, the blow, the blowers, the heat blowers, I think that's how they named it. And that, that were so loud and also full of mildew and mold.
You're talking about here?
Yeah.
Okay, those are old blowers and no one has really been servicing them. They're supposed to be air dampers. There's supposed to be air dampers outside so that they bring in fresh air, it gets heated going over a cord so you're not losing heat. It's part of your heater. They're all, I just looked down into them, they're all full of dust, dirt, everything the kids have dropped into them. So they really need to be taken apart and cleaned out or completely replaced. And the, and the blower motors on them, some of them are very old, the newer ones, and in fact, a few of the old ones, a few of them are nearly silent, you can't hear them. Then a few others, you know, there's probably bearings going on as well.
So they are serviced and replaced if we think that this is the system that we want to keep for heating and cooling. They could bring fresh air and they could be quiet.
There's supposed to be, there's supposed to be an automated damper in there and no one even knows if they're working or not.
But they're, those are original, aren't they?
Those are original and so my question would be, are they still serviceable? We talked about kids dropping things in there and all that.
There's a lot of reasons to think they.
Before this process started, I had an informal conversation with Craig Conrad, who said that the older units in Mills Lawn, it's getting extremely difficult, it wasn't his time to get parts for them. So he recommended replacing those. Not that they're conceptually were wrong, it's just that they couldn't, if you needed a new blower motor, the chances are you couldn't get one.
Okay, so I guess my expression then is for you is why, why can be considered in terms of replacement?
I think we're getting a little out of our sights, but that that condition would be a one for one replacement with a unit vet, with a new unit vet that maybe can both heat and cool. But I think we're getting into solutions and that may be one of.
No, you're right.
Several solutions down the road.
I did want to add on the, well, no, I'm gonna let you go David.
Okay, so I was asked to look at the, the high school, the exterior and the roof. So I've only been on one small part of roof. I've not had an opportunity to walk on any other roofs. So I was on the high rise roof and on the outside, I've only gone around the outside. I've not addressed anything on the outside from the inside. So in other words, no windows were open, no doors were open looking at the inside of them, so strictly on an outside basis. So the, my overall impression, well, actually, I suppose I should begin with, despite the negative impressions that many villagers have of the high school buildings, they appear on first observations to be in relatively good condition, particularly because there's been very little maintenance done to them and what we'd expect that they'd be in much worse condition at this stage. The structures all appear to have good framework, the components have all endured despite the lack of updating. Many of the, pretty much all the components on the exterior of the building would be very similar to what you'd get if it was a new building. It would be pretty much a like for like type replacement. There were basic safety issues that probably do need to be addressed there, like the stairwell on the side and the antenna, which we're probably not going to do much about, but some other things like that. But the the high rise building, you mentioned already that it could be expanded out the side. The one issue on that is still that wall. No one knows if that wall has been re-anchored to the, or anchored to the framework, the one on the elevator shaft end that gets the slight movement in it, that was supposed to be bolted onto the frame of the building. And when I was there, I didn't have time to go up into one of the classrooms and pop a ceiling tile. Doors and windows, they're all, they're all in, I mean, as far as the outside goes and being sealed, they're all pretty good. I did have another sheet here where I actually did it window by window and there are some broken, there's some broken glass in a few of them. Screens.
I was gonna say, in the back, there are some single panes.
Yeah, yeah, but I did, I did that in this one, not in this one. So, yeah, and then I was just asked to make it small. Yeah, there's just basic expansion joints that need you colicking in them, which is a normal maintenance item. Visually, I'd have to say that when you drive up to the school, the exterior is unappealing would be probably the politest, kindest word I could use for it. I mean, to think you actually have to go to school there or work there for a day, I think starts as misery looking at the colors on the outside. I mean, a lot of it can stay there. So all the brick is great, but those splashes of color are completely sucking it down and for, I think, relatively small money, they could all be replaced, the ones that need to be, you know, that could be replaced, repainted, resurfaced, whatever. So windows were okay. The shoeboxes, you know, they're always considered the stepchildren of the school buildings and people consider them basically to be sort of trailers, but actually they're modular buildings and the whole concept of them going in there, they're actually a decent building. They're on a foundation, they've got a complete brick outside on it, they've got a roof over them. So yes, they were a fast build and you mentioned the crawl space there, but people also talk about the floors being slightly bouncy in there. We're probably using them for slightly more than they were originally intended when they were in the factory. But with the big crawl space we have, it would be fairly easy to go down, put in concrete pads underneath, put some jacks and some reinforcing beams under those. That would be very, very little money. And actually, and then those spaces, I have no idea why people do not have good air in there because they're the one area in the school that has, every room has its own heating unit, its own heating cooling unit, and each of those should be supplying fresh air every moment that it's on. So if if there is problems there on air, again, it comes back to what you were saying, it's a control issue. I think we've got control issues on every bit of heating and cooling in the school. The music room, I think it's a very iconic building, may not be great for the, for music, but I think it's a very iconic piece of school that can be made to look very cool and probably repurposed into something like a really good meeting room or a lecture hall or something like that. I mean, you've already got it. And I think at this stage, we shouldn't be thinking of getting rid of anything because there's no budget to build anything. So you should be keeping your money instead of demolishing, build what you need beside it and repurpose what we have. The gymnasium and surrounding buildings, they're all in really, really good shape as far as the outside goes. I mean, they're all brick, there's nothing to deteriorate, all the windows are all well caulked and sealed. The one thing that's not nice is there's scuppers coming off the design so the, so the roof water runs down the side of all those buildings. Might be an idea at some stage to actually just put like a box cutter coming down from and move the water away slightly so we don't end up with a foundation issue or something at a later stage. The roofing, it's all bit, a bitumous built up ballasted roofing, all professionally installed. We definitely have leaks here and there. Most of the leaks are small. I'm gonna ask you questions later about where your ones are because I have not been up on those. Some of the, some of the roofs have been restored, so the ballasted roofs, you know, they're out there, they get sun on them all the time. So all these roofs, they all basically have a heavy tar and some of them are probably blow torched together or welded together and then they're covered in stone. But it's still, the direct sunlight is on them all day, every day. So they they take a beating. After about 15, 18 years, they start to dry out, you start to get cracks, some of the seams start to open and they can come back and reuse the same roofing and basically restore it back to a semblance of what it was at the beginning. So some of those have just been done, some more are coming up for that. But all in all, the roofs, other than the gymnasium, should all be workable and repairable in the near future. The gymnasium roof, that really needs to go onto a budget for for replacement. That that roof, first of all, there's no insulation in the roof at all. It's pretty well worn out and if it leaks, it's going to destroy one very expensive wood floor in in that room. So that would, that would be the number one roof to to look at replacing in in a budget cycle. And, yeah, so the shoebox roof was redone six, seven years ago.
That's under warranty.
So I know that people had a lot of concern about the sparking receptacle in the tower last year and they, you know, people feel that that's like bad wiring in the building. But when that, when that receptacle sparked and shorted, I think it was a blue gun or something someone was using, immediately the electricity shut off, which is exactly what it's designed to do. So should it have sparked or should it not have sparked? No one really knows. But it's one of those things that does happen with electricity. When you put, when you put a two piece of metal into a plug where there's electric, it, they can, they can spark and, you know, in this case, it went further than it normally does. But the systems all worked, the breakers tripped, no one was hurt, and that's exactly what the system designed to do. So yes, that was just, you know, it's not something people should be concerned about. And that was about it. You did talk about the push matics. The sides of the music room, those panels on the music room, they're quite likely transite, which would be possibly an asbestos based panel.
It's not friable. It's not friable.
Now, if you're breaking it up, if some kid breaks it a bit more than it is at the moment. But those ones are, but all the same color ones on the big building, they're all steel panels and there's only, so, yeah, so that there's the steel ones.
How about the ones on the outside of the annex here?
I haven't looked at anything of this building.
Same panels as over there, so I don't know if the ones I come by are the ones on the three story.
Well, you're really special, aren't you? You get the transite panels, you get no heat.
That's why it's new.
In a round room.
In a round room. I have a trailer here. But yeah, so that was, that was pretty much, all the lighting, all the lighting in in both schools was changed out to T8, which was, you know, really good thinking. And of course, T8 barely came in and became obsolete. It was one of those unfortunate moments, you know, that it it just didn't last and now the money's in those. But as they, as they die out, then they'll probably get changed over to LEDs. But the T8s are still a big savings over what we had and they're, and they're a good white light.
So that's, if I may jump, that's interesting because I didn't put it in there, but people complain about fluorescent lights in both buildings, feeling like it's loud, it's hot and it buzzes and it flickers. And you're saying that it's T8, it's not fluorescent at the high school?
They're T8s.
No, the fluorescents are T8s. They're just a more efficient lamp than, than the originals.
Yeah. And and so users, we mentioned turning them off and bringing their own lights, which puts the drains on the electric system.
The fixture, LEDs can go into the fixtures.
They can be, yeah, yeah.
So the, it's just a matter of, a light bulbs themselves.
So that was, that was my, my quick walkthrough. I did a complete walkthrough of the outside of the building on that, but this was the short, brief version.
Any questions or comments?
I do, I, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about the shoebox. So I hear what I think you mentioned, short term, long term for the shoebox. And I'm wondering what the goal is in our discussions about the modulars and the trailers? Because even, even let's say that the floor plan and the use of a shoebox is great and we have solutions, we still have issues with those, with that specific 1998 part that was not supposed to last that long. We've passed its obsolescence here.
I mean, one of the things we noticed is, as everybody's been saying, there's not enough storage space. So if we're not, no other, if there was no other use that, that people wanted to use it for, it's potentially, if you deal with the moisture problem, which sounds like it just wasn't properly done to start with.
There's bad grating around it. It actually slopes back into the foundation all around. It needs the step flashing over two thirds the length of it for Jerry was talking there for the foundations out. There's a downspout comes over by the, by the back doors coming across from, like the back doors of the courtyard that come out there. And there is, there's a downspout there that goes off into an underground pipe that no one knows where it goes. And maybe it only goes about eight feet and is pouring water into the crawl space of that. That's another option.
Right. But but the modular units are not the same as a trailer. I mean, I've, I've got a neighbor who has, I know it's a home, it's not a, it's not a school, a modular home. That modular home is a house and it's, you know, it's kept up and it's, I don't know how long it's been there, probably 30 years and it's a nice looking house still. So I do think there's some understanding with the modular units are, the fact that they were bricked in, put on a foundation. I don't think we should necessarily be thinking those need to be torn down. It seems like they could, they could have some important usefulness in the future, assuming, you know, we go forward in this direction, that they could play, you know, be a positive asset for the school.
I would, I would hope that as we move to an MPA that they're going to pay money for.
Right.
That we would listen to an assessment about the, that modular part in, you know, McKinney so that we can make informed decisions rather than say, we're absolutely going to keep them. I mean, we all know there, there are issues and so.
I just, I just think there's, I mean, I've, I've done a little research because I've, because I've been hearing so much negativity about, you know, modular units and what, what does that really, what is that? You know, they're almost just the last 20 years or whatever. So, but, so I just, I'm just trying, I'm just saying that they're not the same as the trailer here, the trailer back here. They're not the same kind of a, a space. But anyway, we don't need to come to any specifics or conclusions. Absolutely, the MPA is going to be, the maintenance plan advisor, assuming we go forward with that, higher will be playing an important role in, you know, our committee is gathering information, but they're not going to be the paid expert who's going to be doing a much more in-depth work. So, which if there, we do want to talk about the maintenance plan advisor and where that request for proposals are and so on. I'm sure people have more, may have more questions with David and others, but I'm kind of thinking it's 10 to nine and maybe we should just move on to hear from Terry about that process.
I, I put a subfolder in the shared drive that says MPA information. We received three bids. This is all public record. I think 24K, 29K, 48K. So our, our task now is to really develop a timeline about how we want to proceed. So I put a proposed, a draft timeline in there based upon a conversation I had with Judith this morning. And so I'll just kind of briefly review it. So the week of May 16th, I think we can designate a selection committee. So by selection committee, it's really the interview committee for the, for the MPA. In the, in the decision point, it's different. If you receive 10 proposals, we've received three. So we can interview all of them, we can decide we're only interviewing two. The following week.
So you're saying on May 16th, is that this?
I'm just saying sometime that week.
Oh, okay, got you.
Yeah, we should probably identify who's going to be on the selection committee and, and that maybe doesn't even need an in-person meeting, I don't know. But the week of May 23rd, I put selection committee notifies firms and schedules interviews with each firm on the same day, back to back. The reason I put only that item that week is because that is the last week of school. And so it's just a rough week to do anything but maybe schedule some interviews for the following week. So hold the interviews on one day. You know, Mike, I think had a good suggestion, an hour long, a 30 minute presentation within a 20 minute Q and A. Once we do that, they, we have a, I have a draft rubric in there. It's very simple. Everybody has edit access, so feel free to add what you want. I mean, I don't, I, I feel like particularly Judith and Dorothy can drive this. Once we use the rubric after the interviews and and make a determination about who we want to send to the board, then we send that to the board, that firm to the board. The week of June 6th, there is a board meeting on June 9th. The board could approve that, that MPA firm. Then the following week, and I don't know if I have that right with the scheduled firm meetings of this group, but the MPA could meet with this group and that there could be a dialogue as services begin. And what I have on the bottom here is from the RFP that indicate, it indicated specifically in there that the selected MPA would meet several times with this whole committee as well as with the board of ed. So that would be the time to, as it says, give input, request for refinements, revisions, et cetera, before we get to the final assessment.
Yeah, I think that sounds really good personally and. And I think.
Can I recommend just one small tweak?
Yeah.
I think this is really good. The only thing I would tweak would be the week of May sixteenth, when the, when the committee meets to review the RFPs and make the decision on interviewing, I would also just go ahead, that same week and notify. Because that gives the firms two weeks' advance notice. Sometimes if, if we only give them one week notice, you won't have all the people in the room you want to have in the room. So that would just be a tiny tweak.
I have a question about the decision on the rubrics. Is that on the schedule? Who, how we can help with the rubrics?
So what's your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, me too. And I'm sorry, it's like six to nine. The decision on the rubrics to rank the NPAs.
So that, that's the selection committee.
Okay.
This group is too big to hold interviews, so it has to be a subgroup. So the rubric, and it's in there, and it's really a simple thing. I think there are eight items and each item is given a point. You know, I just took a stab at it. You might say, I don't think that should be rated that high.
That's it, okay.
That's it.
So, I mean, the week of the sixteenth, we can designate the selection committee, finalize the rubric. And then notify the selected parties.
And we can identify specific questions that we might want to ask to each one. I think that's a good idea if we approach each interview with the same format. So I didn't create questions yet, but. And these are criteria or straight really out of the RFP?
Gotcha, okay.
All right, so are there any questions? How does this sound to people, Jerry?
I have a question. As I recall, in the RFP, they were asked to submit a, a plan that they've done for other school districts.
That's correct.
When is that going to be received?
You have?
It's in there.
Yeah.
I didn't see them.
It's in the folder, the.
Here. Oh, there's a link, I think.
Is it a complete plan?
Some of them answer it a little better than others, but each one had a case study. One had a, had five or six with hyperlinks to them that I think you would find very interesting.
And I think, Jerry, that's where that, you know, did you provide past experience with examples and references, that item in the criteria? You know, if they did or didn't do it as well as others, I think that's where we could address.
Well, I need to look deeper because I didn't.
So maybe.
I was wondering if it is.
In our, in our folder here, we have, that's the twenty twenty-two Facilities Committee meetings. Here we have the twenty twenty-two MPA information. And the three bids are here, lots, E P.
Click on, click on Four Seasons and then scroll to the very, very end, it'll show you, to kind of, I think it's the very, very last page.
Okay, sorry, there's lots of pages in there.
Lots and lots of pages.
Yeah, they're all like thirty plus, well, twenty-four.
Okay, so they actually did it in a really interesting way. There's one, two, three, four, five, five examples. And there's those links, if you click that blue button, it'll take you to the full report.
For each one?
For each one, and it's.
That's why they're not obvious.
Okay.
The other, I think the other firms had them actually printed in there.
Embedded in the.
Gotcha, okay. So should we designate tonight the committee? Is that, that's the basic thing?
Yeah. Yeah, if you have, you know, so the rubrics are open to be looked to be.
I think everybody has, quite honestly, edit access, you know? The good thing about Google Docs is that you can see who makes changes and if there are questions, you can ask. But I'm certain, let me just see.
In this group, it's only Craig Conrad, but I haven't gotten an email address to get access to.
So everybody, right now, has commenter access, which means you make a comment and I can make the change. Or if somebody wants edit access, I'm happy to give it to you.
I think that using comments, that way we can see each other's thoughts on that. I would be in favor of that.
And if you feel like you get in a document that you don't have access to, just let me
Okay, and then they, then once they're chosen, they have, they would meet with us, they have. Now, what I wanted to say was, I think it's really important, you know, from the users as well as from the experts, the information we gather, that we can share that with them. You know, it's not enough to look at the systems, you gotta know how are they functioning, if they're not functioning well. So that information, you know, if we get, can get our written documentation, you know, really up to snuff, so it's easy for them to take to us to just hand that to them as one way of getting that information to them. Yes?
Yeah, so that, that's sort of part of the request for proposals, where they meet with us up to three times and they meet with the board.
That would be after.
Yeah, so after they're selected, you're talking about like, besides looking at the buildings, they would meet with us. And then before they give us their sort of final product.
Well, I would see, I mean, I, they're supposed to meet with us three times, right?
They can meet with us up to three times.
Up to three times, okay. So I guess my point was that, you know, if you're trying to evaluate systems and so on, you need to know how they're functioning. So this information that we're gathering is going to be important as they're trying to assess things. It's nine o'clock, I believe.
There's one more thing that I want to ask you.
Oh, yeah. I just remember one thing I wanted to ask.
I think that in terms of access to this depository, I think that we should add the other board members so that they can start looking at the documents that we are combining. What do you think?
Well, one thing Dorothy and I talked about, I said, people are going to start to get very interested in what we're doing now, as we're talking about these kind of, this, you know, this is going to get, it's going to be in the newspapers, it's going to be reported, the discussion we had tonight, people are going to be coming, paying, starting to pay a lot of attention. And I know there's a lot in that depository, but the public has a right to see this. And so I started to talk with Dorothy about, I think people are going to want to be able to look at the documentation. Now, you know, I know there's, we want to have it put in there in such a way that names aren't associated, especially teachers who have made comments, et cetera. But I think it's going to be hard. I mean, I think it's going to, I think people are going to want to see, you know, what we're talking about, they're going to want to see some of the documentation. So I think we need to think about how we're going to make, you know.
So I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
The first is we do not grant people access to our Google Drive.
Okay.
We can take things.
And put them up on the website?
We can PD them. I've already talked to Karina about.
Okay, cool.
Doing a whole set of, a whole space on the new website for facilities.
Okay. Because I know you did that before. And I think it's, it was a great resource for people.
I would not put the MPA proposals on there until after.
Yeah, I wondered.
Correct.
That shouldn't be public record until after it's, I wouldn't think.
After they're opened? I think they're public record and once they're opened.
I wondered about that.
Just not sure if you'd want to share all that with each other.
Right now, and I think, I think that's.
We don't want to share theirs.
No, it wouldn't be fair to the firms to have that exposed.
So, so this bid is a, is a real trust piece with this committee because you do have access to see them. You know, we live in a strange world where almost everything we do, somebody can come in and say, I want to see this right now, right now. So this is, these are public records, but I think Mike's point is well taken. We have not yet interviewed these folks, we have not yet selected anybody. So, you know, I can pull them out or I can leave them in with the trust piece that these stay here.
Terry, can I ask a question too? Are we discussing that we are going to give those survey results as well? And if that is the case, I would suggest and request that names are obviously taken out, room numbers are taken out because they are identified with a specific teacher. And I would also request that it just is the data and not the actual comments that teachers were doing, that we asked them to do and we did not tell them that this is something that, because some of the comments could be also tied to specific teachers.
That's, I wanted to discuss this with you. Because I do think that this committee should have access to the room numbers and the comments, they're important. But once we take them out, should we just keep to my slides?
Why don't we just use your powerpoint?
I think the slides are good enough, right? I do, I did copy a some quotes, but I don't think that they're identifiable in the quotes.
I thought we will, we can look over them.
Okay, all right. But yeah, okay, I think the slides, if that's okay with everybody, then we'll do so.
Yeah, the slides are there. It kind of resolves. Is there anything else to discuss? Oh, next steps, assignments. So Dorothy, you said that users will be trying to think about priorities.
I'm trying to think about how to prioritize this. This is, I don't have yet a good concept. I do not know how to prioritize those needs when they all tie together. I'm a little bit at a loss here on how to do the next step for the users.
Well, I'll let you struggle with that, if you can.
So, so we have to look at the rest of the bill.
Yeah, we have more to do.
So can we get a little bit more time? And I think Jay wants to interject something.
With that timeline for selecting the MPA, we need to schedule a meeting for us for the week of the sixteenth. A night that this committee can get together, decide who the selection committee is going to be, finalize the rubric, and notify the select parties.
I think, I don't think we need to meet, honestly. I think soon, make that selection. I mean, I was assuming you'd speak to the users, you guys would kind of think about who you would like to see, and then you could do the same.
Can we, can we agree on a big format, like how many?
How many?
No more than five?
Well, we can't have, we cannot have a quorum, which is, Terry will be there, Jay will be there, you and I will be, that's four. So we could theoretically have three more people.
Okay, so we want us to know the three people?
Yeah, so why don't we talk and.
Do we think that seven is not too many for our interviews? Okay, all right, seven. And three more, too?
So we can add three more.
Okay, okay, we'll talk then.
Yeah, so we'll talk and.
So.
So when is the next meeting, though?
So the next meeting will be the first Thursday of the next month.
Which is the second.
Is the second, yeah, it's very quick.
Okay, June second, seven PM here.
Any, anything else?
I have a question. We've talked about the, about the MPA. I was curious when Mike thought he would be getting involved from an architectural perspective.
Well, I think, I think the, what I'm doing from an architectural perspective is still kind of to be determined in terms of, in terms of planning work.
Right. Well, when would you, when would you anticipate from what we've been discussing?
Like, I'll just throw out some, for examples. Let's say, for example, the committee says they want to consider replacing McKinney classrooms, keeping it maybe for non-educational use, but replacing it with classrooms, maybe consider adding a bandroom or tornado shelter or something. How could we do that? Where might that go on the campus and how much would it cost? I can help with that. I'm just, I'm not sure when we're going to be at that point. Or if.
It seems to me like when the MPA tells us, can tell us more about the systems in the buildings and the potentialities for improving them, upgrading them or not, then we'll have a better sense of what the current footprint is not going, the needs that this is not going to need, or where there needs to be deeper renovation as well as new construction.
Yes.
So to me, once we here can start to get even that first report from the MPA, we're going to start to see certain things are not going to be met here, certain needs are not going to be met, even with the, you know, with a maintenance plan that's going to bring things, upgrade things to function well. Does that make sense?
It does to me.
That's prior to the final report of the MPA?
Well, you can start to think about it, yeah.
Yeah, and there's been a lot of thought already done, so some of it isn't going to be starting from zero. For example, the twenty eighteen plan had a bandroom, tornado shelter with an office addition that provided secure vestibule. That's all been conceptually considered before, so I think that's going to help things move a little quicker. I just don't want to presuppose what's going to happen.
Yeah, I would just feel for, you know, the progression from the MPA to conceptual designs and, you know, when, when that might happen.
I would think late summer, early fall.
Okay, thanks so much, everybody. I hope. And for you guys who are still teaching and leading in the school.